I'm going to call the county council meeting to order. Uh, Mr.
Wait, hold on. You all set? Mr. McGee has the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Zembo, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Kuzic.
Present.
Mr. Deed.
Here.
Mrs. Farah.
Here.
Mr. Heckman.
Here.
Mr. Laugh.
Here.
Mr. McGee.
Here.
Ms. Fargo Heffner.
Here.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
And Mr. Rinsky.
Oh, that's here. Okay. And Mr. Rinsky.
I'm here.
All present, Ms. Fargo Heffner and Mr. Warner by phone.
Very good. Thank you. All right, now we'll have... Is there a motion to approve the minutes of May 2nd, 2019?
Motion to approve by acclamation.
Second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, we're going to have a confirmation of reappointments. Mr. McGee, you have the resolution.
Where asked by Northampton County Council, the following individuals shall be confirmed in their reappointment as indicated hereafter. Area Agent Agency on Aging Board, reappointment, Joan Good, term to expire July 2nd, 2021. Mary Jane Long, term to expire June 31st, 2021, and Mary Jane McAder. That's all I got. So moved.
So moved. All right, thank you. Uh, is there any discussion?
No, we did that last night.
All right. Seeing that, like you want, we're going to do these all as a group? All right, call for a vote.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Mrs. Farah.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Mr. Laugh.
Yes.
Ms. Fargo Heffner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Here.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mr. Kuzic.
Yes.
And Mr. Deed.
Yes.
Pass a five vote in nine to zero.
Thank you. All right, now, we will go to courtesy of the floor. And let me just emphasize this. Uh, everyone, I'm going to call out everyone who's been, who's signed up. Uh, when I'm through, if someone wants to speak that didn't sign up, certainly just raise your hand and you'll be recognized. You have five minutes. Five minutes would include any discussion you want to have, or if you've initiated discussion with the council member or anyone else, that's part of your five minutes. So however you want to manage it, it's your five minutes to manage. All right, so first up, uh, is Mr. Tom Bruno. And I would ask everyone, even though I say your name, I might mispronounce it, but come up, when you do come up, please give your name again for the, for the clerk. Go right ahead.
Thank you. Tom Bruno. Uh, so, good evening. Let me get right down to business. I've previously provided you with a plethora of issues from around the country of problems with E S and S and their machines. I also informed you that the vast majority of judges of elections and virtually all of the inspectors of elections were never able to weigh in. Uh, tonight, I'd like to look at a few other pieces of this devolving puzzle. Uh, the Express Vote XL uses a barcode to tally the vote. Barcodes are extremely sensitive to ink contrast and improper reading positions and the violations of the so-called dead zone, which is the area on either side of the barcode where no numbers, text, or stray marks are permitted. Any markings in that area will lead to misreads or no reads. Likewise, improper positioning of the barcode, as well as ink contrast such as low ink or substrate background noise, all impact on the scanner's ability to properly read barcode. All cybersecurity experts agree that end-to-end verifiability must be the goal. The XL tabulates a barcode, not what the printed ballot says in readable text, and only after the ballot passes in front of the print heads a second time after the voter reviews the ballot, before being counted and then dropped into the secure storage bin. This provides an opportunity to alter the barcode after the visual inspection or for ink to smear the code, rendering the vote unreadable. Perhaps the biggest problem is not the quality of the machine's security, but the character of the manufacturer, and I've previously provided you with a plethora of documentation on that. The University of Pittsburgh's Blue Ribbon Commission study and recommendations on Pennsylvania's election security is of particular interest. The main thrust of the study and its recommendations can best be summed up by the following quote from that report. Quote, "Ensuring that voting systems provide a paper record that the voter reviews, a software-independent record, provides an important security redundancy that should act as a deterrent to cyber attacks and should provide voters with more confidence that their votes have been counted accurately." I provided you this citation link. The same report goes on to say that every system has a vulnerability and that a determined adversary can hack anything that is software-dependent, but that a robust accountability audit using paper ballots that are readable without the use of an electronic device assures the integrity of the vote. Again, in that vein, the barcode or reader does not meet that recommendation. Juan Gilbert, from the University of Florida, an inventor of the XL's precursor, the Prime Three, has gone on record as stating the E S and S Express Vote machine is poorly designed in contrast to an article in the Morning Call by Mr. Chappell, who I believe is in the audience here. Experts... Shortell, I'm sorry. Yes, Shortell, I'm sorry. Uh, experts like Andrew Apple of Princeton University, Richard DeMillo of Georgia University Techno, Institute of Technology, and Philip Stark, University of California, Berkeley, all have said, "No commercially available EAC-certified BMD," it's a ballot marking device, "is contestable or defensible." The overwhelming majority of cyber-experts have all said there can be no security of anything that relies on software. The only way to mitigate risk is to use a paper ballot that is readable by a human and is software-independent. I've already provided you with a report by Homeland Security's Office of the Inspector General, and, and now the abstract, uh, from the University of Princeton and, and other folks that were there, and I have also given you the Blue Ribbon Commission recommendation link. You can check those for yourself. These documents represent months of research by some of the foremost scientists in America. We are debating the security and integrity of a voting system, and we don't get a do-over if you blow it. I, I gotta say, I've heard a lot of people complain about how many, how much the lines might be, or how inconvenient it might be. The reality is, it's not about our conveniences, it's about our security. It's about the integrity of the vote. In closing, I feel I'd be remiss if I didn't call into question the interference in the Election Commission's statutory autonomy. Someone has had their thumb on the scale long before this council's deliberations. The only right thing to do is to remand this back to the Election Commission and allow them to do their job independently and transparently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bruno. Uh, next, we have Joanne Messenler. If you'd come up and restate your name.
I am Joanne Messenler. I am always concerned about senior citizens in many aspects. I even hope to be one someday. I'm a political activist, also very active with ARP. I would say it is a no-brainer. We have a better system with express vote with less cost for overtime. I haven't heard much deliberation given to the consideration of costs which would mean a big difference in our taxes. And while taxes are necessary, that doesn't mean we should keep inflating them by not doing our homework. This administration has clearly shown they have done their homework. The time and effort has been unreal, and I think it's pretty clear what the decision should be. Go with express vote, and that, ask your people that actually are at the polls and know how it operates. I am a watcher in almost every election, and it's different, I have a different perspective than what you people do, and it's not your fault, it's just the way it is, and I would entertain any questions, if you have any questions for me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Messenler. Um, I'm sorry. Next is, uh, trying to make sure the timer gave you your right time. Next is Sandro, Sandra Pizzolato? Thank you. If you'd come up and give your name.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Pizzolato. I've been judge of elections in Allen Township since 2001. We now have 3,700 registered voters. I believe the E S and S Express Vote XL machine is preferable to the hand-marked paper ballots for both the voters and the polling place logistics. Going to paper ballots seems like a backward step in efficiency and accuracy. Voting with paper ballots is a two-step process. First, the voter will have to complete the paper ballot by filling in the ovals. Multiple marking instruments have to be provided. They're going to wander away. Uh, if there are two sides of the ballots, some voters will forget the second side. In addition, the paper ballot has the potential for voters to vote for more or less than the allowed candidates. Since there is no enclosed space, privacy will be an issue while voting and walking to the scanner. In addition, once the ballot has been successfully completed, the voters may get confused and think the voting is done. They mark their ballot, they're done. Uh, if the voting time is significantly lengthened, they're going to get frustrated and leave. So you can lose voters along the way. The second step for the paper ballot is the voters will have to proceed to the queue for the scanner, another waiting time. When voters reach the scanner, the ballot will be analyzed and the scanner will reject a ballot if it is over or undervoted, thus increasing the voting time by at least five fold until the poll worker explains the reason for the rejection, gets another ballot for a return to the voting cubicles, and gives the spoiled ballot to the judge of elections. Other disadvantages of the paper ballot are more poll workers will be needed to instruct the voters at the voting cubicles. Also, the paper ballot weighs at least twice the amount of regular paper. Considering 3,700 registered voter base plus 10%, this results in at least 4,000 ballots, over 100 pounds of paper, that has to be conveyed back and forth from the election office. In addition, the primary elections, the ballots are specific, Democrat, Republican, or other. The inspector must select the appropriate ballot from the stock for each voter, thereby slowing down the signing process also. Any pre-printed ballots that are not used by the voters will be wasted every election. By contrast, the XL machine has advantages in that is similar to the current voting machine. The voting process will be streamlined because there is only one machine and one screen to view. This cuts down on voter time and frustration. Voters have privacy because the curtains enclose the machine. The XL will not allow an overvote. Also, if the voter undervotes, they have a choice to choose the additional candidates if they wish. The voter can view the completed printed ballot and confirm their choices before finalizing. For economy, any extra ballots can be used in the next election, and they're only about four inches by 16 inches, weighing a lot less than the paper ballots, which allows for easier transportation. I urge the county council to accept the XL machine and to please do it soon so we get to use it in the November election.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, all right, next, we have Charles, is it Grabner?
Grabner.
Thank you. You'd just come up and...
Yeah, good evening. My name is Charles Grabner, and I'm a machine operator at Allen Township. I'm only referencing what she just said. Uh, we, we had two, two machines to look at the last time. We had the samples here. And the first one was where the document is, X them off, mark them in, and submit the paperwork, and that's what she discussed about all the wait. Now, we noticed today the XL seems to be the choice of the county, and that's fine. The paper ballots are selected and will be added to, what we need is more scanning, more people at the polls that do this paperwork. Uh, I'm not familiar how this is going to operate, but you might need a person to feed that person, the paper into the machine rather than just the person themselves doing it, because people have a hard time just handling any bit of the paper. So my concern is long waits in lines to sign up, plus long waits in lines for voting, and it's going to confuse a lot of people, so it's going to take a lot more out of the workers making sure it gets voted correctly. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Uh, and now, next, we have Norman, uh, is it Dan, Danzig, Danzel?
Daniel.
Um, okay, thank you. If you'd just come up and repeat your name.
Norman Daniel, Judge of Elections, East Allen Township. Uh, I've been doing this for, I think, 30 or 40 years. I started when they had the mechanical, mechanical machines, when you came in with the new suitcase-type ones where you had a page through. They lasted one season or two years, I think, at the most, and then they were decertified. And we got the machines we got now. Now you want to go, and you're thinking about going to a paper ballot, reminds me of going back to 1920 when my parents might have voted. I think we're beyond that. Everybody talks about the barcodes. Everything today is barcode. You buy something, you got a barcode. So I don't buy that things are going to be tampered with. The machines are independent, they are not connected to anything. Someone would have to sit down with them for several hours to even compromise one. So I was there at Lehigh County with a lot of other elections judges, most of them from Northampton County. We viewed all of the machines that they had. E S and S had three or four different systems there. Most of the judges, when they saw this, they said, "This is what we'd like. It's compatible to what we have now. It's user-friendly. You got everything on one screen." I, I can't say much more than that. I like it. Uh, the other machine that you considered or are considering, that was my second choice when I made my choices. So I would urge the commissioners to vote for the XL machine. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Um, next, we have Carol Smith.
I'm Carol Smith. I'm the appointed judge of elections at Upper Nazareth Township East. Been doing it there for many years.
Which township? Sorry.
Upper Nazareth Township East. In a local election, it wouldn't matter to me as a judge whether electronic voting machines or manual ballots are used. They all do the job, and there are no long lines to contend with. That's a local election. However, in a presidential, senate, or congressional election, primary and general, we have long lines going out the door and down the street. We know that we process them as fast as possible because voters are always waiting for people to exit the booths. Even though they have all the information that they, as they go along in line, they have all the information there that they can look at, they still take time in the booths. And the booths are not empty, because that's what we look for all the time if there's people in line. The E S and S voting machine that has all the votes on one large screen and creates a paper ballot which the voter can see but not touch seems to be the closest to what is already used. It seems that it would be the easiest for the voter to adapt to. And I spoke with many friends in Warren County, age 70 to 85, mostly women, who use this machine and are very satisfied with it. They wouldn't want to go back to paper ballot, that's what they told me. Now, my concerns with paper ballot are speed and privacy. The current flow is for the voter to go to the books, sign the appropriate page, go to the voting machine, vote, and then leave the room. With the paper ballot, the flow is for the voter to go to the books, sign the appropriate page, go to a privacy area, hopefully a privacy area, and vote, and then get in line to put the ballot into the machine and then leave the room. There's an additional step here. It's going to take more time. And let me talk about the speed issues with the paper ballots. Each voter is allowed to fill up to three ballots. I understand that's the law of Pennsylvania. If they make a mistake and need another ballot, we need a void procedure to get them another ballot and get in line to fill it out again and put it into the machine. The current procedure is just to press a button. If there is an overvote, too many selected for the position, the machine will tell them, and we will need a void procedure to get them another ballot and get in line to fill it out and put it into the machine. The current procedure is just to press a button. If there is an undervote, too few selected for the position, the machine will still tell them, and we will need a special procedure for them to get in line to change it, because obviously you want them to put as many, you know, the correct number of people there, and put it into the machine again, and, and, but the current procedure is just to press a button. You can see the difference between the ease of what we currently do versus the unease of what we would do with the paper ballot. With avoid procedures, the flow is not as simple as it used to be and could get confusing. Any additional time spent addressing these issues would, I believe, translate to longer lines outside the door, and I can tell you, people do not like, in my, in my district, people do not like the long lines out the door. Now, my privacy issues.
I just wanted to let you know that, you know, you have a minute.
Okay. People have to wait in line at the machine that reads the ballot with the person behind them, can read their ballot, they can drop it on the floor, they can have it sticking out of their pocket, they can hold it in their hand. If you give them a secrecy folder, they can drop it out of the secrecy folder. Uh, so, privacy, I think, should be considered here. And what happens if the polling place, you know, people take these things home, what happens if the polling place runs out of the secrecy folders? Then what do you do? Um, I think there's an issue with the way the folder, that's already been set, and, uh, just one last note. The ES machine, E S and S machine, and the, the, the machine that reads the, the votes, they all have a USB. That's what you take back to the registration office. So you're both, it doesn't matter whether it's manual or it's the electronic version, it all comes down to that, that little ESP, uh, USB, rather, then that's what's going to count your vote. Both machines have a paper trail. I just believe a voting machine that closely looks like what we already have, one screen, one machine to use, is just going to be a lot easier for the voters.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have Rolf Teichner.
Yeah, I, I agree that we...
If you'd just give your name.
Oh, my name is Rolf Treisner, and I agree that we don't use a paper ballot, we use the, uh, one that also requires paper, but I'm a machine operator, and I know how confused people already are to get them to vote, and, uh, I don't know, I think the paper ballot's a little more complicated. I think we're going back in time. Um, you know, I know when I started voting, I started voting in machines with the levers, and we went to electronic, now we're going back to paper, you know? And in another 10 years, are we going to keep the quarry in business by chiseling our ballots in stone? But that's about it. So, that's all I got to say.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have George Teichner.
What is his name?
Teichner. Same.
You're right. Treisner or Treisner?
Have I been saying that wrong for years?
It makes no difference. Treisner, Treisner, I, either, either.
He's my former neighbor many years ago.
Either, either.
All right, go ahead.
I'm sorry. George Treisner's...
Treisner.
Okay. Uh, I'm Chair of the Election Commission, and we reviewed the both machines that were being produced, and we found out that economically speaking, uh, just printing ballots, just printing ballots alone, cost over $100,000. There's no need to do that with the machine that we approved of. Consequently, each election will be saving $100,000. Does that make sense? Sure does. In addition to that, the governor has said he was going to give us a certain amount of money for the machines, which brings down the cost, and the initial cost of the machine that we actually approved of is going to be less than the other machine, and we don't have to print ballots. Thank you for your attention. Be good to yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Teichner. Uh, next, we have, problem eight, uh, Mandalena Homick. I don't know if I got that right.
Hi, my name's Maureen Hornick. I'm also a member of the Elections Commission, and we were here a couple months ago, and this room was crowded, it was standing room only. We discussed, we debated, we talked about paper ballots, and we talked about the E S and S machine, and the commission voted and approved the E S and S machine. And I am asking you to stand with our vote. I have an 11-year-old who's pitching a Little League game tonight. I would rather be there. I feel like I already did my job. Um, I already researched, I already debated and discussed, and I feel like I did my part, and I'm just asking you to accept what we had already done here in this room as the vote and the machine that we should use. I don't want to go back to paper ballots. I feel like it's taking our society backward instead of forward. We have kids today, think about it, we budgeted these machines for 10 years. So you look at a 10-year-old, they're going to be voting in eight years on these machines. Now, everything these kids do today is electronic, okay? Their education is electronic, their toys are electronic, everything they do. When they walk into a voting machine, eight years, or a voting booth, eight years from now, and you hand them a piece of paper, they're going to be offended, okay? I'm, I'm serious. I think that we trust technology in every form of our life. I don't think we have to go backwards to a paper ballot voting system. I don't want intention to ever be assumed. If there is a recount, I don't want you looking at ballots and assuming a voter's intent. I like the way these are marked, and you don't have to assume a voter's intent. So, like I said before, I feel like I already did my job, we were here, we voted for a machine, and I'm asking you to approve it and move forward.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have Leighton Snover. Mr. Snover here. Uh, I have Mr. Snover tie it, no, no, if you see him, I'm going to skip and then tell him he can come up at the end. Uh, next, we have Trudy Fatsinger. Ma, could you, the microphone? Ma'am, just, you can stand still, he's going to get everything straightened out.
You just need a little bit. Okay. Thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Trudy Fatsinger. I'm a resident of Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Um, I am almost totally blind and a member of the Lehigh Valley Council of the Blind, a group of blind and visually impaired consumers in Lehigh Valley. Recently, we had a demonstration of both the XL and the Express Vote machines. Uh, we had quite a few people who tried them. Being from Northampton County, I tried the XL. I found it to be extremely user-friendly. Um, I'm a senior citizen and very used to using computers, but it's only in the last 15 years that I've been able to vote independently and privately. If you have paper ballots, you will have to have machines now for blind and visually impaired people. But I found the machine to be extremely efficient. It was very much like the machines we have. The voter is handed a ballot, and it's very easy to find the place to insert the ballot. Um, you can, there are instructions that the person can continue to refer back to if they need to. While you're voting, you do not need to hear instructions over and over again if you don't need them. You can move with arrow keys, there's a cursor pad, just like more and more people are becoming used to. You can move up and down the ballot without having to wait for things to be read if the person already knows who they would like to vote for. You can arrow up or down and find that, that candidate and move on. Um, I found that the process was streamlined. At the end, you can have the XL read the paper ballot that's going to be submitted. Uh, the paper stays in the machine. That was the part that I liked best. The Lehigh County people who were present at this demo did try the Express Vote because that's the machine Lehigh County's buying. Um, my concern about that is that you need to take the paper ballot out of the Express Vote when you're through voting, and the paper ballot needs to be taken to another place in the room and deposited. Um, in a lot of cases, someone is very likely to come up to us and say, "Here, I'll take your ballot, I'll put it in for you." How do you know? You, you really have to remember to physically go with your ballot, take it over there, and somebody has... and somebody has to show us where to put it. I find that that's a privacy issue, so I would very much encourage you to purchase the XL. It's very much like the machines we have, and as was already mentioned, more than where people are used to using electronics, and it, I just feel a lot of the points that have already been brought up are, are things that I would also have mentioned, and I thank you for the time that you've given me this evening.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next on the list, we have Patricia, is it Brae, I'm sorry, it's, there's a script, Patricia, I can't even spell it, I apologize for that, B.R.A.E.W., is anybody even close to that?
I know, is there a Patricia?
Is there a Patricia B. something? No one, you can always come up at the end if somebody went into the bathroom or something. Next, we'll go to Jim Luzander.
Yes.
Okay. Able to do that one?
Greetings, everyone. My name is Jim Luzader, I'm a judge of elections in Bethlehem 14-7, and I've been joining it for two years. I was glad to hear about the governor's initiative to bring paper ballots and traceable ballots to the state. I found the current machines are very workable, my machine operator's here, he's going to be following me. In our district, we have 1,300 registered voters, I'm proud to say, in the last election, we had a 70.2% participation, we were number two, there was some folks out there in Williams Township who beat us by a few votes.
Mr. Kresic's responsible for that.
To process those votes in a timely manner, we have one machine operator, two inspectors, a minority and a majority, a clerk, a magistrate to keep the peace, and myself. Both Tom and I went over to Lehigh County to look at the different offerings, because we were, wanted to at least see what was up for grabs and what would be best for our voters. And as we, as we attended the different breakout sessions with each of the different vendors, we listened to their sales pitch and tried to understand the, the process. The machine that the commission, the Express Vote XL, was our preferred choice, but when we looked at it, we said, "Well, my goodness, we're not going to get this one, this one looks like it's too expensive." It is so much above the rest of the machines that we probably can't afford it, you know, it's probably going to be over the top. But, as you've heard about the paper ballots and some other things associated with printing up at election time, new ballots for each election, over, my understanding is over time that this is a cost-effective alternative. If we have a two-step process, or either ballot marking or manual marking and then scanning, now you have a couple more lines to manage, you have voters who are going to require assistance, I just don't see us being able to do that efficiently with one machine operator. So, I think that if these other, from a practical standpoint, you may need more poll workers to manage these poll marking devices and the scanning devices and the lines and the queues and the questions. One of the things I like most about this is the privacy, the curtain comes around it, there's not separate machines, and it has a light that lets you know that the voter is in process, so that it's easy for one machine operator to actually properly manage two voters voting at the same time, which is essential during our busy hour. So, I would recommend that you, you do in fact go ahead with the Express Vote because of its, one, one screen also is very important. What we saw on some of the paper ballots was some of the ballot was on the front, some of the ballot was on the back. On the voter marking devices, you would have like, "Okay, let's vote for Senate, let's vote for Commissioner, let's vote for this, this ballot initiative." Whereas on one screen, people would think, like, "I remember I wanted to vote for this guy and who's running, I don't even know who this guy is," you know? So, when you're looking at the whole picture, it's a lot easier, and it looks like our current ballot, just in electronic form. So, I really think that it's going to be for voter purposes, voter education, and ease of use for the voters we have, this is going to be the easiest transition. And as far as security goes, I think you'd have to have a really inside job to trick these machines, no different than the ones we have now. There's multiple levels of security, we're bonded, we're signing, we're doing the pre-vote count, we're doing the post-vote count, we're taking the ballots down. There is really no way to trick these systems. And one last thought, so I do recommend the Express Vote XL, is public education. So, I think this is a really positive development the council needs to take advantage of, that would help in a lot of ways for voter education, and also to encourage people to register to vote who haven't, and encourage people to go to the polls to vote. So, I would encourage you not only to adopt this Express Vote XL, but to embrace it as a positive move for the county and to get more people to vote at both primary and general elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Tom Hoffman. Just come up, say your name, Mr. Hoffman.
I am Tom Hoffman, and I work with Jim at 14-7 in Bethlehem, I am the only machine operator, and my biggest concern was going to be, what is, every voter's going to ask me, "Why are we changing?" And how do I do it? And it's, it's a pretty simple explanation with the ESNS XL, which is, the screen looks a whole lot like what we're used to, and I, I think the voters transitioned to that kind of screen pretty well, we changed over then, and this new one is not much of a change from that. And the other, and the other thing, all I'd have to explain for them to understand is that, and you're going to be able to look at it in paper also, there's two records. So, I, I thought the transition period would be, and getting people through the voting poll on that day is going to be the best with the ESNS.
Thank you, sir. Next, we have Roger Dreisback Williams.
When I first heard about what we were going to be doing, I thought of a machine very similar to what is being proposed. As I thought about it further, I recalled that at one point in our time, some of us can remember, we could buy Tylenol in little metal containers, and then someone said, "Oh, my Tylenol was contaminated." And so now, when I bought this Tylenol, we now have these sealed. It turned out, the complaint was a fraud, but even though it was a fraud, we still have these containers sealed. And so, to say that the electronic system works, fine, but we now know that there is an opportunity and a benefit to try and figure out a way of making a change inside the machine that can't be noted. In the present system, you have total vote, but you do not have a breakdown in terms of who they're voting for. So, the machine can very easily be set up that a percentage go to a particular candidate, and the total remains the same, but there's no way of checking it. Having a paper ballot means that at the end of the day, you can go through and verify that the vote was accurate. I'm not saying it won't be, but only with a paper ballot can you have that verification. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. All right. Next, we have Kenneth Teskey? Teskey?
Thank you. Kenneth Teskey, T-E-S-K-A. All right. So, I'm here to ask County Council, can they please take a look at 124 through 126 Main Street, AKA, the Glenon Hotel? From what I understand, Northampton County owns the Glenon Hotel property and the building in itself. This building has become a major safety factor, it's ready to collapse, and I don't mean, I mean immediately should be looked at. So, what happened was, I got ahold of Mr. Steve Barron, the county comptroller, back on January 10th to express my concerns. He says, "County says, uh, that building's slated to be demolished in the spring." And I said, "Well, you know what? Bravo. That's what it needs to have done to it." So, springtime rolled around, and I tried to get ahold of this guy, Mr. Steve Barron, and he didn't return my telephone calls. I mean, okay, so you don't want to talk to me for one reason or another, I'm just trying to get an update. So, in the interim, I got ahold of, uh, County, not the county comptroller, I'm sorry, I lost my spot here, Mr. Freeman, and I got ahold of Mr. Freeman's assistant, his name is Dominic, and he told me, he says, "Well, you know, the hotel's a unique situation." He says, "'Cause it's in repository." I said, "Listen, I don't care what the hotel is in, it needs to come down, because it's going to fall down on top of a car, school bus, something. It's going to come down, and let's hope that it doesn't come down and, you know, and, and hurt, you know, kill or maim somebody. I mean, it's bad. If it wasn't, I wouldn't be standing up here pleading with you guys, if you could please take a look at this thing." You know, I'm not a structural engineer, but I, my, my vision works pretty well. And when I made this call to Mr. Barron, the second floor of that building collapsed down onto the first floor, which is street level, and with the, the Borough Council, believe it or not, when I went there with my concerns, they said, "Well, we're going to try and get a grant." I said, "But I thought the county owned it." I said, "There's no time for grants, to tear this building, got to come down." So, in the interim, they put barriers and caution tape there, them barriers and caution tape aren't going to do anything when that building is starting to fall down into the road. I would appreciate if you guys could please do something, you know? Okay? Thanks for your time.
Well, I think somebody will let you know what's going on with that.
Yeah, it's, it's, listen, it's a dangerous situation, it's a, it's a public problem. Thank you.
Executive heard you, I'm sure, somebody will be letting you know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Next, we have Janice Hobbs Pelacchio, I know you've been here, and I probably messed your name up again. You could just say it for her, I'm sure we have it right.
Hi, I'm Janice Hobbs Pelacchio. I have, I had one thing I was going to say, and then after some of the stuff I heard, I'm going to have to quickly do some other things, too. I assume you all got the cost figures that I sent to everybody via Linda Sembo, she said she sent it to everybody, so, okay. Our cost figures did come up, well, I said last week that the figures, or a couple weeks ago, that the figures that we saw in the presentation that the administration was showing people to, I guess, prove that the XL was the best choice, the figures they were giving were very misleading, so I tried to look them over very carefully and correct them, and I sent those corrections to you. What I came up with, basically, they claimed that their total cost for the XL system for 10 years was $3,375,787. And we, and they claimed that clear ballot was over $5 million. When we re, when I re-looked at all the numbers, I got clear ballot ended up with half that amount, 24, $2,485 to $2,567,000. That was half, and it's definitely lower than what they said. I also, just today, I thought, well, I didn't even look at what they said, they said our negotiated cost ended up being $3,375,787, and when I was looking at it again today, I didn't, like I said, didn't look at their numbers, but I re-looked at them, and it appears that in their final negotiated cost, which I didn't leave that, and I'd like to pass them out with my calculations.
Sure. Thank you.
They added, they deducted that HAVA grant twice in their, in their calculations. So, their real figure for, the cost figure for the XL is $3,717,787. So, their whole presentation was sort of misleading at the bottom line. Also, in reaction, in, you know, in answer to some of the, some of the things I was hearing from poll workers and judges of elections, I had about, some of their arguments about against clear ballot, I had already prepared, I hadn't given it to you yet, because I wasn't sure whether it would be needed, but I answer a lot of those questions that they're, they're saying things that aren't quite true, or they're misleading. That was in part of their presentation also, that they gave to, let me see if I can, sorry, I'm a little disorganized, I'm just trying to get all the, more to pass out. This is a copy of what, this, the front piece is a copy of, is what they had in their presentation with all those same concerns, saying about the weight of the paper ballots, some of these things I answered in my cost report, and they were, you know, still saying they're going to be too heavy to carry, they're worried about all kinds of things. So, I answer all those, all those things, I, I don't have time to sit here and read it to you, but it will-
Excuse me, I just want you to know you have a minute and a half, so I don't want you to be taken by surprise.
I tried to paper, I was going to bring a stapler, but I wasn't sure that would come through the, through the machine out front, so, so I used the paper clips. I have both, on, on the front there, it says, "Poll workers express concerns," I addressed them in one sheet, and they also list, the ESNS, they only came up with three bad things about it, concerns, and I have a hot, entire list of our concerns about the XL attached also. So, I've just been concerned that the, both the Election Commission and whoever else they've been trying to, they've been trying to, you know, say that the XL's the best machine, they're giving you misleading information or not getting all the information. Now, I have been a poll worker or machine inspector or inspect, and minority inspector for over 11 years, I've been working polls all that time. I have been in the voting integrity movement since, for over 14 years, and I founded a group in Bucks County several years ago, where our, all we do is do our homework on this, on this issue. We follow what cybersecurity experts and election experts say.
Sorry, your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Question. Which county are you from?
I'm from Bucks County.
All right. Next, Deborah Hunter.
It's not, oh, no. That's what, it's, that sucks for her. Because this is wrong. Hey, again.
Yeah, my name's Deborah Hunter, I reside at 901 Frost Hollow Road, and you asked me here, which is one reason why I'm here, but also, and I just want to let you know that I have a timeline that I've made, because I understand that some of the concerns are perhaps the process that was used by the Election Commission. I have a timeline starting from August of last year, that I think you might be interested in hearing about, but I don't want to use up all my time going through it, but I would, I have it here to share it with you, okay? Just a couple of things with regards to why or how you're going to make this decision. The thing that I have heard that is undisputed is from the poll workers who are saying that it's going to be the easiest transition, okay? That, that's the only thing I've heard that's undisputed. The cost is disputed, the security is disputed, all of that kind of stuff, it's that it's going to be easier to use, okay? I have personally talked to directors of elections from, and I specifically did this, from the counties that are like ours, in fact, they're more heavily populated than ours, Chester County and Lancaster, who have been using paper ballots for years, okay? The system is down to a T. It is faster, it is more efficient, because you have more stations- It is faster, it is more efficient because you have more stations to put people through. And people who are going to the ADA compliant BMD machine, they will have their own separate line. So that's one thing. But anyway, I have confidence, I, I don't think our poll workers are any more, uh, how shall I say, inept or incompetent than Lehigh County, than Chester County, or Lancaster County. I have every confidence that they can learn this if they're trained properly and can be just as efficient. A couple of things that you need to know that haven't been talked about, but before I get to them, the other thing I want to talk about is, um, back in 2006, you picked a system, not you, but there was a system that was selected that was decertified two years later. You had to repurchase all over again. And I read last time, the proposed bill, HP1, uh, that does say, and if it passes, and it's gonna get past the House but not the Senate, but who knows what's gonna happen in the future, a couple of years down the road, the last line, "For purposes of this subclause, the term individual durable voter verified paper ballot means a paper ballot marked by the voter by hand or a paper ballot marked through the use of a non-tabulating ballot marking device or system." And the last part says, "So long as the voter shall have the option to mark his or her ballot by hand." They have to have the ballot. Excuse me, I'm talking, Charles. Thank you. Anyway, uh, and then regarding some personal, personal concerns, okay? Personnel concerns. As an election commission person, I was told by administration, uh, even the only election code says, which I had to examine because I wasn't given any of this information, nor were any of my fellow election commissioners, about personnel concerns, who does the hiring, the firing, all of that kind of thing. Um, so I was told, uh, that, okay, we don't have any control over the people who are in the voter registration office. That is completely up to administration to do. So I just want to alert you to a couple things. And again, the reason I'm alerting you to this is because I don't know about them, none of it's been communicated to me, even though I am on the election commission. Uh, let's see here. Uh, we were told that there, uh, we have no power over that. And the third party for the primary, because we no longer have a custodian of the machines, that position was been, had, was cut by administration. Um, so for this election in the spring, they're going to, and again, you have to get them to confirm this, 'cause this is the last we heard, they're going to a third party for the primary to set up everything because they don't have a custodian. Uh, and then also, with regards to training, no matter what system you pick, you're gonna have to have your training done, okay? And again, I don't know, even though I'm on the election commission, is there still going to be an acting director in charge of this? Or are we going to have the other director back that I assume has more experience with this? And is this why the county's worried about, I don't know, maybe training on a system that's so different, uh, from the one we have? Those are questions that I think you need to ask, and again, as an election commission member, I don't know the ma, the answers to them. So, and again, if you want to ask me about the timeline of how this was done, which I think you might find interesting, you know where I am.
Thank you, thank you. Um, next is Sandy O'Brien. Sandy, sir? Sorry about that. Triggering alarms everywhere, huh?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, Sandy O'Brien Warner, 705 Paxtonos Avenue East. And it's good to see all of you again. And, um, I want to thank all the poll workers who came. I know, I, I was here at the workshop time, I know that they were very much in favor of the ESNS machine. And it is a long day, I have been in those polls and stayed the entire day until the end, and sometimes they are not having dinner till nine or 10 o'clock at night. It is extremely, it's an extremely grueling day. Um, so I understand that they would like to maybe keep something close to what we have, and besides, you know, we're in the Lehigh Valley and we never want to change anything here, so it, I can understand all that. But, um, we are about to move back to, or, back to the future, or back, back to 1920. We are about to go there because right now, there is a bill coming out from Senators Sanders, Warren, Booker, Gillibrand, and Harris, asking for paper ballots. Um, we, we have a representative in the House who's also going to introduce something similar. And I'm concerned that we're going to spend the money on these things and then maybe in two years, we're going to have to replace them again. It's quite an expense. Um, I also wanted to talk about, reiterate what Deb Hunter said, and that is that other places that are using paper ballots have said it goes very smoothly and there is not a problem. I mean, who doesn't treat their ballot like one of the most precious things in the world? We all are so happy to be able to have elections and that we, we do get a chance to make our opinions thought. I can't imagine somebody, uh, being cavalier about getting their ballot to where it would be put into the counter. As, they, they put up little, like old study carols like we used to use in elementary schools, you know, I'm talking about PEG. People have privacy there, they vote, they, they take it out, it's, um, okay. Uh, there were so many things that came up. The calibration issue, I've talked to you about that, these machines are moved, when they're moved, they recalibrate, they don't always count the, exactly what you, what you wanted it to be. I'm also, I'm concerned, and this is just, I'm not, I'm just asking, um, Auditor General Eugene D. Pasquale has, has concerns about which counties have taken gifts from people selling these machines. And the last I saw, we, Northampton County, had not reported to him about whether we had or not. I think he had about 15 who said yes they had, and there were some quite luxurious gifts, and then there were others that were pretty meaningless, in, in my opinion, but I would like to know and probably.
Did you get anything?
I'm just asking.
No, we, we received nothing, not even a couple of calls.
Well, there you go. Okay. Eugene's waiting. Like to hear from you, I think.
All right. That's been verified, so go ahead, Mrs. O'Brien.
Okay. Um, so, um, I think that, uh, no matter what's been said here, paper ballots do seem like the way of the future, even though they come from the past. That's about all I want to say. Thanks again.
Thank you. All right, I have, um, next is, uh, Ms. Palamba.
What?
You'll have to excuse me. That's not it? Well, you come up and, you come up and say what it is.
I don't remember her.
And then we're all on the same page.
My name is Susan Delandon.
You wanna take a shot at that? Excuse me, you're out of order. All right, go ahead, you have your time.
I'm a judge of elections in Lower Salkin Township III. I have done this work for quite some time. I am also, uh, a close colleague, uh, of Alan Jennings from the Community Action Committee of the Lehigh Valley. So first, I'd like to say that I agree with all of the, um, points brought forth by the judges of elections. And, um, the one thing, though, in my talks with Alan, that we have not really brought up and discussed too much are, are tonight, are the preciousness of the ability and the right to vote. So I'm just gonna read a statement for him that I think really brings forward what the crux of that is. And so Alan has written that there's no greater privilege that we Americans have than participating in our democracy through the power of the ballot box. Our right of free speech enables me and Alan, if he were here, to stand before you and ask you to do the right thing. But the right to vote, the power to vote, the obligation to vote, and the ability to vote, that's a treasured right, and it was guaranteed to us more than 240 years ago. That right to say what we believe and to petition the government would have minimal benefit without the right to choose who are being petitioned. If every American is not guaranteed that right, then our democracy falls short. If those who can do, but those who cannot, do not, then we have no claim to being among the great nations in history. Any obstruction that keeps any voter away from their polling place calls into question the legitimacy of that election. We have the technology, true, it may not be perfect, and true, we may have to make corrections down the road, but we do have the technology to make sure that every single person, black, white, brown, female, property owner or pauper, educated or not, housed or homeless, strong, healthy and able-bodied, or saddled with limitations, every single person can exercise their privilege of voting. And as a judge of election, I have personally seen and assisted people who have had to struggle with that right to vote. Counties, the executive Lamont McClure and his administration are proposing a system that has, as far as we can tell with the research we have done, every element needed to ensure that those who need our government the most, those with any vast array of physical limitations so many people bear, are able to be proud participants in a democracy that we hold so dear. So on behalf of the Community Action Committee of the Lehigh Valley, and myself personally as a resident of Northampton County, and myself as a, as a representative of a judge of elections, and mindful of how many our system leaves behind, I urge you to acquire the system that makes our democracy as powerful as can be. And in that mind, it appears to be the XL system. So by supporting this choice, you can do your part in ensuring that every resident in Northampton County, regardless of their limitations, can vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else? That's all I have on my list. Uh, I'm sorry, there's a hand, if you would come up and identify yourself. And you have five minutes.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Kevin Scoblan from Citizens for Better Elections. Passed out some information there. The first item there is just a letter from Professor Juan Gilbert. He asked me to give you his statement. He wanted to correct a recent morning call article that you may have seen, that he claims he vouches for the espresso at XL. He's not even seen the espresso at XL. He doesn't vouch for it and is in fact very concerned that it sends a cast ballot back through the printer, giving it the ability to mark on a ballot after it's cast. And that's in his statement. So obviously, we could talk about paper versus plastic all night. I think that's not your job. I think that's not what county council is supposed to be doing. That's the job of the selection committee. Your job is to oversee that process and see that it was done fairly and without, you know, done independently, without political influence, and whether you want to now enter into a contract, whether you want to pay money for this proposed system, whether you think it's a good product for that price. And I think that's, that's your job. So I'm just gonna present you information, and then you can hopefully use that to make that choice. The first thing I would, I'd sent you some information about the cost comparison, about Monroe and Northampton and Lehigh. I do need to correct something there. I think I got the number for Northampton wrong. Um, I had listed it, but I had been looking at the budget amendment, which I think is, does not include the federal HAVA funds. So those would need to be added to that. So the total cost and the actual purchase price would be just short of $3 million. Um, that's compared to Monroe County, which is, has, you know, fewer voters and fewer precincts is paying $762,000, and Lehigh, who has more voters and more precincts, which is paying 1.7 million. The second thing that I wanted to bring to you was the Delaware special election. Um, that's the reason that you guys decided to table this four weeks ago. Um, I was a little surprised that, that you guys, you know, thought that would be a good metric to, to use because it is a small turnout election. Um, this machine has very little track record, it, it only has had like 1,500 votes cast on it before this Tuesday. Um, so we've added another 6,000 votes to it. Um, so then, you know, the question is, how did it do? I wasn't expecting it to sort of fall on its face. It's a low turnout election, most of the ballots are single-issue contests, there's just one thing that's being voted on. But there are some things that I think are concerning. I spoke to Jennifer Hill, the executive director of Common Cause, a government watchdog group in Delaware, and asked her how things were going, and she told me about some of the concerns. And I asked if she would put those in writing so that I could share them with you. So that, that's an email, that's the next item, from her, talking about some of the problems in the transition. Some of those problems I think are to be expected with any transition to any system. It's gonna be rocky at first, but there are some, some concerning points. Uh, one voter reported that in their polling place, both voting machines were not working at Pleasant Valley High School. These are brand-new voting machines, I'm not sure why they weren't working. Um, there was a lag time in reporting the Newcastle County results. Um, the polls closed at eight, there were 4,000 votes. They had said to expect them between 9:00 and 9:30, they showed up close to 11 o'clock. I don't know what the reason was. Um, I do know that there was a problem with the ESNS system in Johnson County, Missouri, in November 2018, reporting results at the end of the night. And it really, you know, caused a big, big mess. They had to actually make some software changes, and this is the first time that it's really been used since those software changes, um, have been out there. So I don't know if it's related or not, but that's a concern. And then I talked to you last time about the undervotes that we had seen in Warren County, New Jersey, and why that was concerning. Um, there's, again, undervotes here as well, um, on a single-issue election. That means that a voter showed up at the polls, checked in, went into the voting booth, and did not cast a vote. And they may have done it on purpose, um, that's certainly possible, but it doesn't usually happen, especially in a single-issue election. Uh, more likely, it seems to me, they were confused by the machine or the machine malfunctioned. So those are a concern as well, and those are something that needs to be looked at. I also gave you all of those results for the different school districts, showing the undervotes. In Sussex County and Kent County, they have not reported the, the totals with undervotes, they just gave the candidate totals, but I gave you those anyway. And then the next thing I wanted to mention was, as some people had alluded to, there was, there's HR1.
You have 30 seconds, I just want you to be aware.
Okay. Uh, there's this new PAVE Act, it was just introduced yesterday by Ron Wyden, and it is cosponsored by Senator Warren, Booker, Gillibrand, Sanders, Harris, as well as nine other Democratic senators. And it would require hand-marked paper ballots, and it would also disallow the express vote. Um, it quite, definitely targets it. It says that, um, a machine which is, has a both ballot marking device and a tabulator in one would not be allowed. And also, it has to be mechanically impossible for the device to add or change the vote selections on printed or marked ballots at any time after the ballot has been presented to the voter.
Uh, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nobody else, uh, no one, I have, if there's, please, I, there's a few, but you can come up first, sir, to my right. If you would identify yourself. You have five minutes.
How's everybody doing?
The clock has started.
You can take my five minutes with any question you want. Last time I was here, it was 11 years ago, I think, Mr. Spadoni, and I had to, uh, I heard all the same kind of stuff. I brought the new machine after the tablet machine in the basket was here, and, uh, we had to replace it with this new machine that we used for 10 years. And the esteemed gentleman that sat right there told me that the machines were gonna be junk and in one year they were gonna be gone, and he was, I was gonna have to buy him lunch or he was gonna have to buy me lunch. Still waiting on that lunch. The, uh, other thing, it's, it's, this, this whole thing is the same, I was the chairman of elections, okay? This is the same, it's like, it's like deja vu all over again. We had all these experts that came up and told us how the machines were gonna be hacked, they were gonna be easy to do this, that, everything was gonna be cast, triple votes, double votes. But the last time, the experts were actually from Northampton County. They were from here, not from Montgomery, not from Bucks, not from somewhere else. They were professors from Lehigh. They were people who were really concerned about voting. They're not here now. They're not saying this machine's gonna be junk, okay? They had taken it as far that I had to go on business matters with Tony Iannelli to defend my choice for machines, for our election commission's choice in the machines. And, uh, we prevailed, they got the machine, we're 10 years down the road, now the government's saying we have to have another machine. If I was on the election commission right now, I would recommend to you guys to take this machine, without a, without a question, okay? The one that we have right here. Everybody's talking about paper ballots, you know, they wanna have 800 pounds of paper and carry it around, you have to have custody of it. This has a paper trail, it shows you what you voted for, um, you see it right in front of you, and then it, then it gets cast. So if there is something wrong with ballots with, someone's talking about barcodes, and this has been vetted, you know, I, way more above the pay scale of your experts that came up here. The barcodes, um, they're saying that they could be rewritten. If there's an anomaly in those barcodes, you can see the vote of what was written, what the person said. And that'll show up pretty apparently and quickly that if something's wrong with the machine, when you recount it. You can recount the votes, the paper votes in your hand. You can recount, how many votes did Bill McGee get? And you could go down the whole district and count those. They're there, paper ballots are there. Lot lighter, a lot better. So again, uh, just, it's, it's, it's so weird how it's just like, keeps coming around in circles. As you know, Mr. Heckman, you talk about it all the time. So the other thing is, if I was where you are right now, Mr. Heckman, I would recommend that county council passes this resolution, a resolution to concur with the election commission, an independent board who voted for this, and concur with their decision to buy this machine. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Does anybody have any questions? I don't, but.
All right, guys.
Yes, I know, someone had their hand up. If you would please come up and identify yourself for the clerk.
Hi there. My name is James Tarvath. Last year was the first year I ever voted. I just want to make sure, and from what I've heard tonight, it is fairly unanimous that everybody wants to go with this more technological voting machine. Now, my fear of the paper ballot is what happened in 2000 with Bush v. Gore. My fear is that with all the, and I want to stay as non-political as possible, but with all of the issues that we saw over the course of the last two years, with people thinking that there was interference with the elections, if we have another issue where we have to recount 9,000 ballots, I don't want that to be Northampton County. I don't want to have to be sitting in a constitutional law class of 20 years old, sitting in another constitutional law class, and listening about, Northampton County was the one that switched, or rather, sorry, flipped what happened in the election in 2020. And that is my main concern. And I believe that, from what I've heard from all these experts and whatnot, that the XL is going to be the best choice, because of everything that they've said already. And, yeah, I'm just, I don't want to see another 2000 happen. I don't want to see us have to have our election decided by the Supreme Court. I'd rather have it decided by the people of the United States.
Thank you. And thank you for voting. A long life of voting. There's nothing wrong with that. We shouldn't have made that. Is there anyone else? Please, if you would, come up and identify yourself. Kusik, this is a teachable moment.
Good evening. My name is Gray Simpson, 410 Wyandotte Street. I just wanted to provide another young voice. I've, you know, I've been voted in a couple more elections than that gentleman did, but I just think that it's wonderful that we're able to have these discussions, and that we're able to discuss the pros and cons. I think whatever gets decided, it's going to be a well-considered decision. I just want to add that I think the overarching, the most important consideration with all of this is, the people have to trust the system, and whether, you know, it's just hard for me, as a millennial, as someone who is a digital native, it is hard for me to trust a box that has technology that is made by some third-party company, that I have no idea who owns that company, who runs it, who regulates it. My dad has been an IT professional all his life. He always says that computers will never be infallible. There is just no way, no mathematical way to ensure that a system that is computerized will be infallible. There are problems with paper systems. There are problems with electronic systems. I prefer paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to address counsel, who hasn't already spoken in the public? Okay. Seeing no one, we're going to move on. And the next item, now, this will be the county executive report. I just want to be very clear. Executive's going to give his report. This is a regular feature of our meetings. It's not a give-and-take. He can come up, he's going to give the report. I do want to thank everybody, though, who came up and spoke. You respected the timeframe. I thought it was respectful, and people that weren't speaking were respectful. And I appreciate you coming out, and especially to our two students, which I thought was great. We had two students, one who wanted one, one who wanted the other, and I, that's great. You're what it's all about, not us. So anyway, thank you very much. All right. Mr. Executive, you have a report.
Mr. President, there are so many wonderful things going on in Northampton County right now. I have a long list, but I'll defer it to our next meeting, because we have such an important topic before us tonight. And I too want to echo your statements. I can, I cannot remember a contentious issue in this, in this body discussed, as discussed as civilly, without ranker, with everyone trying to do their very best to be as accurate as possible in the statements they make. With that said, I need to correct a couple material misstatements. The gentle lady from Bucks County, who I have a great deal of respect for, because she's devoted so many of her years of her life to election security, she's absolutely wrong about her calculations. And we're not double-deducting anything, and it's just very unfortunate that that misstatement was made. With respect to Professor Gilbert's quote in the morning call, I cannot speak to that. I'm not going to make Mr. Chortel part of our debate. All I can say is, I'd love to see the question that he was asked. I can ask you leading questions and get just about any answer I want from you. So the, I find that to be a little bit specious, but it is what it is. Finally, one of the things we heard tonight, we know that the Express XL is more secure than hand-marked paper ballots. We know that. And we know that the Express XL is ADA compliant. We've heard from folks representing the communities of disabilities, vision impaired, and other impairments. That's who we're thinking about. And just a few statistics on that topic. As of 2016, people with disabilities accounted for 25% of the eligible electorate. And it has been shown that segregating members of this community to an alternative voting system has resulted in voter turnout that remains under 50%. That goes to the point that we heard from the judge from Lower Salkin. Disability Rights PA advocated against hand-marked ballots, because the law requires that people with disabilities be able to mark, verify, and cast a ballot privately and independently. The Philadelphia commissioners are confident in their selection, and look forward to implementing their new machines in the November election. They have already legally accepted 84 machines. The system is not more expensive than the hand-marked ballot system. Given the cost of privacy booths, additional scanners, and paper, the upfront cost of the hand-marked system is higher in the first year. It remains more expensive over the course of 10 years. Senate Bill 48 will not pass in time to have any effect on the court mandate to replace the machines, and would likely result in a gubernatorial veto. Florida has the longest voting lines in the country, and 69 of 70 of their counties use hand-marked ballots. It takes 40 minutes to do acceptance testing per machines. Any further delays would be detrimental to a successful rollout in November. We have, for you, just today, and I believe Ms. Cozy has presented you, we have received a correspondence from Mr. Jonathan Marks. Mr. Marks is the Deputy Secretary for Elections and Commissions, Pennsylvania Department of State. Mr. Marks observes, "The autocast option that allows voters the option to skip manual verification is not certified in Pennsylvania. Voters will not have the option to cast their ballot without reviewing their selections. Thus, the autocast option concerns are not applicable to the systems fielded in Pennsylvania." "The election management system used to create ballots and manage election results cannot be connected to the Internet at any point during its lifecycle. Fielding conditions in Pennsylvania require that these systems must be maintained without the ability to connect to an external network. It can only interface with other components of the voting system via dedicated memory storage devices or a dedicated closed network. Remote-access software cannot be installed on the election management system. Fielding conditions in Pennsylvania require that only certified system software can be installed on voting systems. Counties must also verify system integrity by doing trusted build validations as part of the election preparation and post-election canvas activities. It is asserted that virtually no penetration contested is conducted on voting systems. This is not true of the voting systems recently certified in Pennsylvania. In accordance with the new voting system standard published by the department last year, the department conducts security testing beyond, beyond what is required by the Election Assistance Commission, EAC. Pennsylvania's testing includes a penetration test by our examiner." Mr. Marks, the Deputy Secretary of Elections and Commissions for the Commonwealth, also had additional observations. "The system implements controls to prevent the printer from marking or printing on already marked ballots." I mean, this is really what it comes down to, right? This is the real concern. Let me tell you what the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania says. "The system implements controls to prevent the printer from marking or printing on already marked ballots. Our examiner also noted that the software design includes error handling in relation to all functions, and has sufficient audit logging. The tabulator functionality is designed to tabulate marked ballots, or to write and tabulate voter selections on a blank ballot only. The system has been subjected to rigorous functional hardware and security testing requirements per the federal and PA state requirements. All data input into the universal voting system is validated using digital signatures. All media that isn't validated through original digital signature is rejected." That's the Commonwealth's evaluation of the system that the election commission in a democratic, small-D, process voted 3 to 2 to select for Northampton County. Ms. Cozy, we don't have President Carter available to us to go look at elections. He has a broken hip right now. Ms. Cozy spent yesterday in Delaware observing the election that took place. You heard some emailed comments about what happened there. Ms. Cozy was actually there. In addition to that, Ms. Cozy is in contact with the Director of Elections for the state of, is she on the phone now?
She's on the phone right now.
Oh, she's on the phone now? Who I know, can you hear me, Director?
Yes, I can.
Okay. Well, at this point, I will just ask you to identify yourself, and tell us what you do, who you do it for, how your election went yesterday. And we have nine members of our governing body here, and some of them may have questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, that's fine. I'm happy to do this. So my name is Elaine Manlo. I am state election commissioner for the state of Delaware. I've been doing this job for, well, 12 years as commissioner, and 20 years total in elections. I was the director in Newcastle County before I became commissioner. So we have the ESNS XLs. We did our first rollout, and we will use these for next year's elections, but we wanted to do what we call the soft rollout yesterday for, on Tuesday, for our school board election. It's a statewide election, and there are not as many voters, and it's not as busy as, of course, you know, a general election. So we wanted to give all the voters and the poll workers an opportunity to try the machines ahead of the big busy next year. To say it was a success is an understatement. I live in Sussex County, Delaware. I started out in the morning in Sussex. I worked my way through the entire state, stopping at polling places from, in all three counties, up and down the state, until I got home at 11:30 at night. And I did not have a negative comment. I had poll workers who gave me some suggestions, but nothing, no one did not like the machines. Everyone loved it. I talked to poll workers, and I talked to voters at every stop I made. It was better than I ever thought. I thought they would like it, but I thought it might take some of our, you know, like all of us, some of our poll workers are older. I thought it might be, might be a challenge for them to get used to something new. Not at all. We also bought electronic poll books, and I thought maybe we were rolling out too much all on one day, the voting machines, as well as the electronic poll books. Not at all. Everyone was happy with everything we bought. And I talked to a lot of voters as I went through this, and voters said the same thing. It was fast, it was easy, it was easy to understand for them. They felt confident in the machine, so they get to review their paper. To me, it's the best of both worlds. You're voting on a machine that, that the voters are used to seeing. Our voters in Delaware are used to seeing a full-face electronic ballot. And then they get to review the piece of paper before they go back and cast their ballot. I think we are giving the voters what they need, and what they're used to in Delaware. I will also say, we put out an RFP, gosh, well over a year ago, and we had seven vendors bid on that. 12 of us reviewed the RFP, and the RFP was about 2,500 pages of responses. So we had 12 different people, some from our Office of Management and Budget, some from our Department of Technology and Information, and other election officials across the state. And all 12 of us not only voted for the same vendor, but for the same machine. I cannot say enough good about ESNS. And those of you who know me pretty much know, I say what I think all the time. We had 15 ESNS people on site yesterday, up and down the state, checking our polling places, working in our offices, working in our warehouses. I've never had that much support from a vendor in anything I've bought. It was an overwhelming success, more than I ever anticipated. I expected people to like it. I did not expect them to like it as much as they did on the first, the first day out. It was, it was wonderful. I just could not say enough good. So I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manlo. Is there anyone on council who has any questions?
I do.
The individuals who have questions will identify themselves and ask you their question. And these are all members of county council.
William McGee. Thank you for taking the time tonight to educate us on your process down in Delaware. Did you have a lot of resistance when you were approving the machines to folks that were-
I did. I had some advocate groups who wanted paper and only paper. But again, 12 of us, you know, we had people that bid, our RFP was wide open. It didn't say it had to be an electronic machine. We would have taken vote by mail, vote on a paper that was scanned in the polling place. It was, it was not at all restricted. And so when the 12 of us voted, it was all the same. And we couldn't talk to each other. Delaware had a very strict process about this. We had to individually rank these machines. Actually, what we did was, we individually ranked the machines, and then after that, we asked for another demo. So all seven vendors came in and did another three days of demos. And then we had to re-rank them, and we still came out with the same result. The advocate groups, yes, some wanted just paper only. Legal Women Voters, for instance, was very happy with what we had. Common Cause still would like just paper and nothing but paper. My own personal opinion is, Delaware voters have only ever voted on a full-face ballot. And if I handed them a piece of paper and said color in the circles, they would have thought we were going back to the Dark Ages. But it wasn't my personal opinion that bought these machines. It was the opinion of 12 people voting independently.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Ms. Tara Zarinski, fellow council member, has a question for you.
I'm just trying to ver-
Okay.
Yeah, my mic's on. I just have some questions about information that I've come across in my research, my own independent research. So there's basic security requirements for voting systems based on the SAFE Commission that met in August. Are you aware of this report?
I know that there were some reports in August that have been addressed by ESNS.
Right. The report lists critical cybersecurity risks for voting systems, and says the system should be strong, software-independent. It also says that the best approach-
I can hardly hear you, but go ahead.
All right. It says the best approach to require the voters is to hand-mark paper ballots that are scanned and tallied by cyber systems, but also dropped in a safe box. The other thing that it says is that at Georgia Tech, at the Cybersecurity Summit, Mr. Michael Morell, from the acting director of the CIA, told the audience that our failures to imagine how our adversaries were attacking us have been our biggest and most devastating failures as our nation, and he urged against these machines. There's countless other reports from New York State, Georgia, and even Philadelphia, and a report from Homeland Security's Office of the Inspector General, the University of Pittsburgh's Blue Ribbon Commission, and Andrew Pell, and the Honorable Robert Crittendon, Secretary of State-elect Brad Raffensperger, Rep. Barry Fleming, all members of the SAFE Commission who convened in Georgia, who strongly recommend hand-marked paper ballots. Can you tell me why these individuals who are in cybersecurity would recommend a hand-marked paper ballot as opposed to the machine that we're going, we could potentially be endorsing?
Did you, you got, did you get that?
I'm getting most of it. I'm not sure of all the names. I'm not sure of all the names she, she said.
There's a great many folks she mentioned who have said there's a great deal of concern regarding security and other reasons why this machine, these machines could be a problem.
I can't understand why they would have security concerns. These machines are not connected to the Internet at all. No one can hack into these machines. Every process along the way of creating the ballot up until people vote is air-gapped. Nothing is ever connected to something that could be connected. I have a great IT team and we went through this pretty carefully. As far as Homeland Security, I work with Homeland Security all the time. Actually, in the last election, we had two Homeland Security officials in my office all day and we've had them do penetration testing on all of our systems. Not once has anyone from Homeland Security said anything like this to me.
Okay, so there were other concerns brought up?
I just want to make sure she's on, she knows you're starting. So she's gonna ask you a follow-up question. This is a little hard because we're on the phone and in person.
Yeah, I apologize, I'm just trying to.
No, no, I know you're, I just want to be sure we're all, she understands you're asking a second question.
So there was a concern from one of the judges from Upper Nazareth, Carol, Carol Smith. She identified that the ESNS, all votes were on one screen and it has a long ballot and you could see everything and that if you used a paper ballot, you would need to avoid the procedures. Are there, and what is the procedure to avoid for the ESNS that you're aware of?
Well, so when you go through the vote, you review your ballot before you cast it, so you review it. If, if you want to go back, it gives you, first of all, it gives you an option to go back. And then if you don't go back and you, you go to the next step or you printed your ballot and you're ready to go, it says that you can quit and then it, there's a light that will come on and the poll worker will come in and, and put in a code. It'll close that out, they'll give you another ballot and you'll re-vote.
Okay. All right, I appreciate your time and thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Mr. Matt Dietz, council member has question for you.
What does the paper trail look like after the election? So is it just the barcode on there or does it, the printout have the barcode and obviously without the name of the voters, who it was? But does it have the results on there? So, you know, if, if the barcode will become a failure, there's still a record of what the votes were to count?
Yes, there's an actual, you'll, you'll see every ballot. It, you know, prints out exactly how you voted on, on the paper. That paper falls into a bin and it's like an activation card, it falls into a bin. And so you will have the ballot, in Delaware now, that's the ballot of record for recount or audit. So at the end of the night, we can take the results all, using a thumb drive off the machine. But we can actually scan the ballot when we're finished, either on our scanners in the office that we use for absentee or in the machine itself.
Thanks, yeah, so that's my question of the concern of the barcode becoming a, a problem. There still is the, the record of what the, the votes were and a chance to look at what that paper is before it goes down. All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. John Cusick, our council is question for you.
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you very much for calling in. My question has to do with the absentee ballots. Did you use the ESNS system for absentee ballots? And how did that process work?
Yes, very well. The county offices that use this, all three of our county offices got the absentee system as well. And no problems, they liked it a lot. We've had a similar absentee system. This, this is actually so much better because it gives you, you can adjudicate ballots on a screen that you couldn't do, we couldn't do on our old system. So, you know, you know how the markings come in, you all have seen that, where they circle the name rather than color in the dot and you're able to do voter intent by looking at the ballot.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions from any other county council members?
Hey, Ron.
Oh, oh, Bob, yes, Bob Werner.
I'm, I'm still there, that's right.
Do you have a question?
Yes, I do.
All right, go ahead. And if she doesn't hear it, we'll, we'll read it back for her. I don't know if this, how this.
Okay, I'll try to speak, I'll try to speak in private, thank you. Thank you for, for, thank you for being on the phone, I appreciate that. I'm just curious, so you do a lot of research and you're, you have an IT team, I believe you said, that did their investigations? In your discussions with ESS? I'm sorry?
Well, I have my own IT team, but our Department of Technology for the state also was part of the team that chose this. And again, like, like you, we have to, we can only buy things that are certified by the EAC.
That's correct. And in those discussions with ESS, was there ever any discussion about a term called flipping on the touchscreen?
No.
Never talked about flipping where a voter would touch the screen and then the machine, it may happen, it may not happen, but it has happened in the past, where the vote would not be cast for the person that they touched the screen with, where the machine was actually casting a different ballot? Did that ever come up in discussion?
It did not come up in discussion and it also did not come up in any of our testing.
Okay. Did they ever talk about, did ESS ever talk about recalibrating the machines?
Not to my knowledge. They may have talked to our IT people, but not to me.
Okay, and the reason I bring up the recalibration is that when there was a problem with what was termed as flipping, they said that the answer was recalibrating the machines, okay? And, and their computers, therefore, if they're jostled or there's a temperature change, things can happen. These were concerns that were also voiced, but I just wanted to see if that was out in the open with you when you were talking about it.
Not to my knowledge. But again, during all, during this whole process of us extensively testing these machines in three counties, we never saw any of that.
Okay, and then one more if I might, if you have the time.
Sure, I do.
In those, in those three counties, how many voters did you take care of with machines?
Yesterday, oh my gosh, I wish I had the numbers in front of me. I'm gonna just give you.
If you can give it to me, you can give it to me another time if you don't have it, it's fine, I just wanted to get an idea.
I wanna bet on maybe 10,000, but I'd have to go back and double-check that.
Okay, all right, very good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, Mr. Dietz has another question for you.
Thanks, just one more question here. One of our speakers that came up today addressed that there were some of the schools that were, were one-vote issued election and they said there's 114 undervotes. Are you aware of that or familiar with that at one of the polling stations?
At one of our polling stations?
Yeah.
That's a total number.
Total number.
Yeah, but, so that there was undervotes in, in a single-issue election at one of the.
Can I, can I answer that? It was not a single-issue election. There were board seats where there were multiple seats. The one I am very familiar with, down in the Cape, you had three candidates on the ballot. That was not a single-issue election. So, yeah, and you had one very popular incumbent, so people may have not voted for, for, for the other two seats. So, so it was not a single-issue election. There were more than one candidate on the ballot in, in several districts, but the one I'm very familiar with, had multiple candidates. And the other thing is this, look, I've been a teacher a long time. I give multiple-choice tests where there is no penalty for guessing and people still leave questions blank.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, they do.
So the fact that there's an undervote is no surprise.
Real elections are always under-faced.
Yes, all right.
I just wanted to hear it from her.
She said there's always gonna be.
There are always under-faced.
Yeah, absolutely. Now, are there any other specific questions for this individual while she's still on the phone? Otherwise, I'm going to bid her adieu and thank her.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you very much.
You know that we're just not.
Thank you, thank you. Anytime, any of you can feel free to call me at any time, thank you.
We have to get rid of all the obstacles.
I have no problem with the questions. I just want to know if anybody had any more questions? I'm, I'm, I'm just a parliament, I'm an umpire here, I'm a parliamentarian here. I'm not, I'm not ordering, I'm not the emperor of council, I'm the president.
I get it.
Mr. President, you can see the, the fact that, that we brought, at least telephonically for you tonight, the Director of Elections for the entire state of Delaware, that we're taking this very seriously. And in that vein, we have Ms. Cozy here who was our election observer in Delaware yesterday and she's gonna take a minute or two of my time to tell you what she observed with her own eyes.
Fine, Ms. Cozy.
I did get to observe a Delaware school board election, which was as thrilling as it sounds. I saw polling locations from more urban areas in Wilmington to the more suburban areas in Newark, where the University of Delaware is, Newcastle, Dover, I was all over. I, I spoke to a lot of poll workers, I was able to speak to a lot of voters. It was all smiles, everyone was thrilled, they were nervous adopting a new system, but their, their nerves were calmed immediately. We didn't hear a single complaint except for the light is real bright that tells you when somebody's in or not in the voting booth anymore. And there was talk of putting ping-pong balls on them. But that, that was the extent of the complaints from, from anyone, poll worker or voter alike. The elections office itself, which I spent several hours in, was quiet. There was one machine malfunction all day, one. A woman tried to cast a blank ballot because she went in and just started pressing buttons. They remedied that situation about 47 seconds. And that was the entire extent of, of the issues in Delaware. Everything went off without a hitch and I stayed until the very end. I got to see the, the poll workers bring all of their, get the early tabulations on the votes. All the votes were tabulated correctly and everything went really smoothly for them. Delaware was very accommodating to me and I'm thankful that they let me hang out all day, so. It was, it was great.
Did you get a chance to stop by Rehoboth Beach? You should have stayed overnight.
I didn't get all the way down to Lower Slower, but I, I got reports from Ms. Manlove and I heard everything went swimmingly down there as well.
Okay, Ms. Zarinsky.
Did you see the screen that they, with which they voted? And did it have, were there any indications that there were any colors or patterns that would influence anybody's vote? The screens looked identical to the ballots that we use now, only in electronic version as opposed to paper version. Exactly the same. That was a, that was a concern. No logos or, I think there was a claim that there was gonna be ad space on there somewhere. No, there was none of that. Well, no, like, people bring it up, you gotta, it's a domino, you gotta knock it down. Yeah, none of that. There was some other question. Will there be third parties setting up our elections? No, we'll have an ESNS, Christine was there with me all day long. ESNS had their staff there the entire day and Elaine is, is not lying when she said the extent to which they supported Delaware's election yesterday was extremely impressive. I couldn't believe the amount of people that they had on hand just in case there were issues that arose. And when that one blank ballot jam happened, you know, I think they had three people on it immediately to make sure that nothing got slowed down in any of the polling locations. So will there be an outside party? No, but we will have onsite support from the company. Right, but what Deb Hunter had said was that there's no current custodian of the machines. We use our in-house O and M staff, it's Northampton County staff. I'm just asking the question. Yep, O and M. O and M, okay, that's a third party then. No, that's their Northampton County employees. Okay. Okay, sorry.
If I can, Tara, I just want to say, you will get a chance, we don't have, haven't even taken, this is still the executive's report and we're gonna have to see, no, 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 he sat down and he, this is part of what he's presenting. But we're gonna have this issue come up under Old Business and we're gonna see if in fact it's even brought off the table. If in fact it's voted to be brought off the table, then there's gonna be a discussion that goes with that. However, you know, I mean, however we do it, but I just want you to know, you'll have an, an opportunity if in fact it comes off the table. If you forget something now, it's not like you can't ever ask again. I know you have a lot in front of you.
I've exhausted a lot of what I.
I just wanted to know if you want to take a break, you'll get a second chance.
Do we, do we get a break on this one? Because this one's gonna go.
Does anybody else have?
I was silly question maybe, but was there any concern, you know, when the printout comes for you to, to read it? Do you need, all of us who need our reading glasses or was there any debate or any question?
So it was a slower election, it was a, it was a school board election. I don't know if anybody's been to Delaware recently during an election, but anybody can vote in a, a school board election in Delaware? You don't even have to be registered? That's a, that's a thing that happens in Delaware. So I did happen to make my way to Newark High School, who was a, a polling location and they were our busiest of the day that I had visited. They were kind of one after another, obviously there were no lines, but people were in and out. And they had never voted on this machine before, they were handed a blank ballot. A machine operator gave them a, a brief rundown of how, how it worked, I mean, 20 seconds top. And they were in and out in under a minute. I mean, nobody, nobody, there was no confusion, there was nobody who had to peek their head out and, you know, ask a question about how something was gonna operate. Nobody had difficulty reading anything, nobody had trouble with the printout, nobody was confused by any of it. Not in what I observed in the 14 hours I was there yesterday.
Oh, Mr. Lot.
Ms. Cozy, I know you've spent a lot of time with these machines and this is kind of a silly question, but, but it has come up and I just want to kind of clarify it. I've heard people make a statement that there's a vulnerability. We vote on a machine, it comes up, we view that paper and we see what we voted for. Now, those are printed on that paper, correct?
Yes.
Now, the concern somebody had in the audience was this thing then goes up, back, down and around.
Yes.
Does the machine have the ability to erase those marks?
It does not. It does not have the ability to make additional marks either. If you look at the email that we gave you from, from Jonathan, from the Department of State, he explains how and why that is not a possibility.
So when I see my votes on that and we have a problem with that election, there's no way that we cannot see my votes when we manually recount these. Just like a paper ballot.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
This is the, this is the paper ballot, right?
Yes.
So you can see the names, not just the barcode.
Absolutely.
So a person can read the name and you can't print over it.
You can manually count every single ballot.
So no auto-fill, no recount.
If you undervote on this, it will print no selection made. There is not even an opportunity for the machine to fill in your selection should you undervote.
Like happened in Georgia just now where they filled them in with a paper ballot.
With a paper ballot, yes.
And if I'm not mistaken, I don't know if you've been doing background research, isn't it in Georgia, and you may have been doing this as you were pursuing this, I think one of the problems they had is, as with some other states, particularly in our southern regions, they, they still are using machines that we're getting, one of the complaints even the feds have said is, you're not, you gotta change your machines. Like they're using what we bought back in, what, 2004 to 2005, yeah, whatever. And they're not getting new machines, it's not so much they're using machines, they're not getting new machines. I don't know if that came up in anything. I mean, I mentioned, since you referenced Georgia, I've done a fair amount of research on my own. Mr. McGee knows I'm fond of research, liberal arts majors. And I, I did find out that was a problem across many areas of the country, particularly Georgia.
Not everybody got sued by Jill Stein, we are that lucky.
Yeah, I mean, people are still using very, very, very old. And we're gonna probably in 10 years, whoever's sitting here is gonna be confronted probably with changing the machines. I think that's gonna be a, a fact of life in the new age.
I, if I can just address one thing as far as that goes before I give this back to Executive McClure. There's a lot of talk about this HR1 and the hand-marked ballot system and you heard from a member of our blind community tonight, you heard from a member speaking on behalf of the Parkinson's community tonight. Almost 35% of the United States electorate is disabled. They will never pass a bill in Congress that disenfranchises 35% of the electorate. It's not gonna happen, so I just wanted to say that.
So when you said 25%, is that the 25% in Pennsylvania?
And what is it in?
And what is it in Northampton County?
I don't know.
Not that it matters, because if you, you know...
I would say that, yeah, I would concur that...
I mean, it shouldn't disenfranchise any percent.
It shouldn't.
What the House of Representatives and what the Senate and Washington claims are going to do as opposed to what they end up doing, I could do, I'd love to do a research paper on that, going back many, many, many decades. But anyway. So, but, you know, understandably, there's a lot of concerns across the board. Are there any other questions for Ms. Cozy? I know she has to jump back up again. Mr. Executive, are you gonna conclude your report?
I can.
No, I mean, a lot of this is dedicated to the machines, obviously.
Yes.
I don't even know if it's coming off the table. So, I mean, it's on our agenda, but we're not gonna be able to have a discussion. Somebody can only make a motion to pull it off the table, get a second, and then vote. No discussion. So we're having some discussion now, but if that should occur, if it's off the table, then I have to assume we're probably gonna go back to some discussion. I don't know how long it'll be, but...
Oh, God help us all.
You know, the last time you considered, had an opportunity to consider it, ESNS, they were here all day with us, I believe in the finance meeting.
Yes, yes. I remember seeing them in one committee meeting.
Yeah, they're here again tonight. And they brought, I believe, their, what I think they have described as their security expert, who I'm sure would be willing to be interrogated by counsel, should counsel have any questions for him.
I would ask, I would ask...
It's interrogation in the best sense.
I would ask that...
Without the lights, right?
Without the cigarettes.
All right. Okay, guys. I would ask that we hold off on that until it would come off the floor.
My report is concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Executive. All right. Now, what I'm going to do is, we go to Old Business. Now, I am going to mix, I'm gonna change. Number one was going to be a public hearing on a lease, and number two was the Contract Resolution, Election Systems and Software. I'm gonna move number two to number one so we can get to work on this, if, in fact, there's something to get to work on tonight, and then people can go home to their families. So, talking about you, I'll probably stay here till midnight. So the thing is, is there, does anyone want to make a motion regarding the consideration of an Article 13 Contract Resolution, Election Systems and Software?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make a motion to remove the resolution from the table.
Okay.
Second it.
Second it.
Second.
All right. Now, we're having a vote on removing this resolution from the table. Please, Ms. Vembow, call for the vote.
Mr. Kuzick.
Yes.
Mr. Dietz.
Yes.
Mr. Lot.
Yes.
Mr. McGee.
Yes.
Ms. Barbara Hepner.
Yes.
Mr. Warner.
Yes.
Mr. Rinsky.
Yes.
Mrs. Farah.
Yes.
Mr. Heckman.
Yes.
Motion approved by a vote of nine to zero.
All right. It is off the table, and it is in your pocket. So now, I will open this discussion up to counsel, and let me just say this. Counsel, this is your meeting now. This is our meeting. It's not anybody's meeting, but that's what you gotta let it to do. If you have a question for anyone, you know, I would ask you to please just be a specific question with a specific answer, and I would say this to the administration too. I would ask that we not get in any prolonged discussions other than answering any queries or something like that.
Will we answer questions?
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right. So here we are. It's off the table. We're ready to discuss. Does anyone have any discussion or questions regarding the resolution? Mr. Dietz, you can start it off.
I guess my first one is, if we should approve it tonight, do you guys still have that $20,000, $22,000 discount price that was in there before?
Hold that over there. Good for you. Hey, hey, come on, guys. I know we're getting giddy.
So did they just say that they're still gonna charge us the $20,000?
No, they're not.
You're not going to, okay.
Do you want them to come up?
Can you just come up here? Because all of our questions are gonna be for you.
Would you please come up, the representatives?
Thank you.
Because apparently there's questions. I just want to be sure. Okay. Would you come up and identify yourself?
Hello, everyone. I'm Mike Getz. I am Vice President of Product Management and Software Development at the ESNS.
Are there any, Ms. Zierinski, do you have a question for Mr. Getz?
I just want you to elaborate on the security, as you understand it, of these systems that verify just the autocorrect, and some of the other concerns that were brought up today by the constituents that were here, asking about and concerned about cybersecurity and auto fill and any problems that might impinge on their ability to vote.
Certainly. I'll make a few comments, and hopefully I'll answer most of the questions that you might have. What I would start with is, we encourage everyone to do risk-limiting audits wherever you're at. That essentially will highlight any problems that might emerge. And we've been involved in risk-limiting audit pilots in New Jersey, Rhode Island, and Michigan, some with this exact machine. As far as some of the security things that come up, we have a person, a couple of people who live and breathe security for the company. They work carefully with the Department of Homeland Security and the FBI on a regular basis. In fact, our equipment, as we speak right now, is at the Department of Homeland Securities Lab in Idaho. They're going through extensive testing with it, and we're gonna get our feedback from them in the early part of June. So now, they've had unfettered access for months, so we're expecting to learn a lot from that. But that's just an indication that we take security very serious, and we're gonna have ongoing dialogue with the Department of Homeland Security and their experts there. There was some discussion about ink and smearing. Well, this machine doesn't use ink. It's all thermal printing, so there is no opportunity for anything to smear there. And there's a lot of concern about barcodes. Well, as was played out in the discussion here, the selections are all printed on the card also. So the barcode and the selection are there. The reason we use barcodes is the same reason that they've been commercially used for five decades. They are used in life and death situations in the medical field every minute, every hour. And they're more accurate than any kind of optical character recognition. They just are. And I mentioned audits at the beginning. Well, if there's any issues with the barcodes, it'll be borne out in an audit. So that's something to think about. There was also discussion about the card passing over the printhead. Well, the printhead is raised, so it doesn't make contact with the card when it passes back. I think that's part of what was mentioned in the Pennsylvania State Report. So it's not positioned to print, and it passes through much faster than when it does when it's printing. So if it were to print, it would be easily noticeable by anybody who was in the, working with the machine at that time. There's also questions and concerns about calibration. Well, these machines are, I mean, those calibration issues happened several years ago with older equipment. We calibrate these machines when we are doing our initial testing with them before they're deployed, and the calibration mechanism is such that it doesn't need to be recalibrated on any kind of regular basis. So another thing to mention is, when you talk about barcodes, software reads the barcodes. So we have to trust that software. If we're using hand-marked paper ballots, software reads those ovals. Same thing. We have to trust the software to read the ovals. That's why we audit, so we make sure it's right. But in either situation, it's software that's reading either barcodes or ovals. So I was glad to hear Elaine Manlove from Delaware talk about our company favorably, because when somebody earlier called out our character, that kind of makes me squirm a little bit, because I'm proud to be part of the company, and I've seen us do nothing but stand up and do the right thing when we're working with jurisdictions around the country.
I'd like to ask you a question. In any of the elections or in the process you've gone through up to this point with the machines that are going out there, have there been any glitches that you have discovered that you had to remedy? I'm saying beyond your research and development phase.
Yeah. You know, every time we deploy systems in the field, we'll have a unit that won't power up, right? Now, we didn't encounter that in Delaware, but those kind of things are gonna happen.
So that wasn't so much a question of something misfiring in process? It was a question of the machine just wouldn't come up? It wouldn't, we're trying to turn it on, and it just wasn't powering up?
Right.
Okay. Are there any other questions? Ms. Zierinski.
So in one of, in the most, I think it was in the most recent election, we had a case where machines had to be moved. They were unplugged and moved. In that case, what would your machine do if that were the case? Like, let's just say, I guess the location wasn't necessarily ADA compliant or something like that, and so they had to move the machine to a place in that location that wasn't ADA compliant, because you can't have stairs. What would you do in that situation, and how would the machine operate if you just plugged it back in?
So you would unplug it, and it would run on battery?
Oh, it would run on a battery?
Yeah.
How long, may I interje...
Yeah, just how long would it run on a battery?
Oh, I'm gonna have to defer to Joe.
It'll run seven hours on the standard battery, but there's an extended battery that takes it to a 14-hour battery.
Okay. If that actually happened in Delaware, I was there.
Okay.
There was actually a doorway. Somebody was in a wheelchair and could not get through the doorway. They were able to unplug the machine. They rolled it over to the door so that the person could vote, lowered the machine, and then put it right back.
That's kind of interesting. Okay. So you also said that there's a thermal scanner. It passes through once, and the second time that it prints, the second time it passes over, the scanner is or isn't raised? And by what mechanism is that scanner raised or is not raised to print?
So it's the printhead that comes down onto the paper to actually thermally print, right? And then our firmware raises that printhead when the command to cast the ballot is issued.
Okay. And so your firmware does that. Is there any possibility that the firmware could have a glitch in it and then print again? Or...
You want to give a percentage possible? I mean, I understand she's asking. What would you say the chances are of what Ms. Zierinski's describing would happen?
And if that did happen...
If you had to give it ballpark, you're not under oath.
In the verification of the printed ballot that has the actual words on it, would you be able to verify in the verification process what that vote was?
So to answer the two questions, I'm not sure how I can describe very tiny point 000.
Very tiny.
Yeah, very, very tiny opportunity. I mean, never say never and never say always, so...
That's true up here, too.
I'm glad that you said that, because, I mean, there is always a possibility for something to happen.
Anything can be hacked, right? I mean, you know, the Iranian nuclear facilities were hacked by Stuxnet, right?
Right. But you'd be able to verify it in the end if, with the printed version? Like, on this, it says, you know, "Best singer ever, Elvis Presley," Patsy Cline, whichever one you voted for would be.
It would still be there, yes.
So the vote would be tallied in the end. And what's your response to the rejections or the concerns of Philadelphia and New York with these machines?
The concerns of Philadelphia and New York? Well... Excuse me. Is Philadelphia, Philadelphia's the process, not so much the machines. They're fighting amongst themselves, aren't they, over who ordered them, who's gonna pay for them?
Oh, I thought it was a similar issue to this.
I don't know if it's the machines in and of themselves. I made some phone calls down there.
We only got knocked off, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Excuse me. Lori? All right, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The contracts were signed on Monday, and they're gonna deploy in November. And Philadelphia made their decision. They had an election committee that voted on it. So it's kind of similar to what's going on here. There was a handful of people that wanted hand-marked ballots.
Right.
But when the city did their, and the Board of Elections did their study, they decided to vote for the full reserving machine. And just back to the rejection...
Would you please come up and identify yourself to the microphone? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christine Valeriano with ESNS, and just to address...
What's your position with ESNS?
I'm a regional sales manager. I was here last time.
Yeah, I remember you. Go ahead.
About the readheads, they try to do everything that you're bringing up at the federal level in the test lab, and the Commonwealth always goes the extra steps during the testing. So, and just like what Jonathan Marks wrote in his report with that readhead, they were not able to do what you were saying. And if that barcode is printed, it does not, those selections are already there. It doesn't put a line through if they voted for you, and it went back through the readhead, cross out your name and put mine, because you wouldn't be able to see that.
All right.
Mr. Lot has a question.
So again, there's no way for this machine to take the mark off. You, in that 0001%, it could actually, God only knows how, but it could reprint, but it would not eliminate the original vote. So you could see there was an overprint on that, correct?
Yes. There's no erase capability.
So it would not be able to force...
You can't erase thermal print.
It would not be able to force, when we do the audit, thinking that was the original. You could definitely see there was old marks and new marks if that 0001% would happen. Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Does anyone else have any questions for this individual? And yeah, please wait to be...
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. McGee.
Quick question on, say, you sell these machines all over the country, certain places, and there's a problem here. Your support team, can you just explain a small piece of the support team? Like, say somebody's doing some testing, and they find a problem. So if there's a problem here, then it could exist everywhere, correct? So how would you handle that moving forward in the future?
That's certainly possible. We find that different jurisdictions have different use cases with our software and our hardware. They use them a little bit differently. But you're absolutely right. If there's a problem in one jurisdiction, it's a very good chance it could occur in another jurisdiction. But we have an extensive support arm, so we've got, you know, 7x24 support available, especially on Election Day. I mean, oh my goodness, we have deployed people everywhere, and we bring our most senior people into our help desk. So everybody is on point to make sure we respond very quickly. But if an issue were to be uncovered in testing, that's one of the things that we focus on at the very highest level, is if somebody uncovers a problem, that's the first thing that we ask. Oh, my goodness, if this is a problem here, is it isolated, or is it broader? And if it's broader, we're gonna scramble like crazy to get it fixed.
And you're gonna take care of our machines if you find a problem in California, and it might exist here. You're gonna handle that and take care of our machines.
Absolutely. That's part of our maintenance and support obligation.
That's part of the warranty program, whatever.
Absolutely.
Okay. If something's identified down the road, you're gonna fix it.
Right.
Here in Northampton County.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question for the gentleman that's here right now? Seeing none? Thank you. Yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Warner? Yes, go ahead.
I apologize. I'm listening contentedly.
Go ahead.
A question goes to the gentleman that's standing there. I can't see right now.
Okay. He's the computer man.
We were, two very quick questions. One, is it normal to put, like, 15 technicians at a test facility or more with 10,000 people? Is that like standard? Would you do that for Northampton County if we ran a test?
We pay special attention to first use of anybody, of any of our customers. And that's what you saw happen in Delaware. It was first use for them, so we overserved them. And, you know, did we need to have 15 people there? No. But we wanted to make sure we overserved them for their first use, and we do that same thing for most of our customers' first use. Some say, no, we don't need the help.
Okay.
Wait, hold on, Bob. Bob, an individual, another individual's coming up, I think, to piggyback on your question.
Yeah. Hi, this is Christine Valeriano. The 15 support people were for statewide, and they not only implemented the Excel full... And they not only implemented the XL full-face voting machines, it was the electronic poll books and also the vote-by-mail systems. So, those 15 people were spread across the state.
Oh, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Second question, if I may.
Yes.
I, I understand that the system is air-gapped, that there's no connections internet-wise, that there's, there's no concerns. And I, I, my question isn't about anything except integrity of the machine itself and the potential for what could happen to the voters. The, this, the lady from Delaware, the election official from Delaware, stated that they had no issues. And I asked her specifically if any discussion had ever come up about touching the screen concerns, problems that may exist. And I brought this question up, I believe, in front of you before, when you first showed up at our council. And the concern was that there might be issues with the touchscreen system when the voter touches the screen and it flips another name on that screen. And when I read about the situation, it was called flipping. And it occurred somewhere between 2017 and 2018, I'm not sure, I don't have my notes in front of me. Were, was there ever a discussion about the situation with the touchscreen changing the vote when a, a person touched the screen, not giving them who they voted for? And was it ever termed flipping and did E S and S say that they would change and fix the system because they could recalibrate or it was a calibration problem?
Sorry?
Yeah, so, if we're talking about the XL, it has gone through extensive testing and we have not encountered problems with the touchscreen and any kind of vote flipping. And that, that testing has been done by state election officials and the Election Assistance Commission.
Are there any other...
My question was, hold on, hold on.
No, go ahead.
My question was this, did, did it happen?
Did it happen? Are you aware of it happening?
It has, it has not happened on the XL.
Does that answer you?
But, but did it, did, the question is, did it happen on a touchscreen system?
Are you asking him if he knows if, if any touchscreens from somebody had a flipping incident?
And/or if it was on any of the systems that E S S had?
Come on.
So, that's a pretty broad question.
Do you know of any E S S system that did the flipping, possibly?
Yeah. I am not aware of any. Is it possible that it happened?
On your machines?
Certainly, never say, never say never and never say always, so...
All right, I just wanted to make sure you understood the question.
But that would have, that would have been borne out in, in both logic and accuracy testing and our certification testing, so that is, that is not a problem.
Okay, so they do, so E S S, E S S does use cal, but the answer to that question was written down. I don't have it in my notes, but the answer to that question, when they talked about that kind of concern, was the calibration, it had to be recalibrated. Have you ever heard that?
Yeah, not with the XL.
He, he, did you hear that, Bob? He said his, there, these machines, all right. I just want to be sure, you guys back and forth, does everybody here, is everybody correct?
I, I, that's fine, thank you.
Okay. Anything else, Bob?
No, thank you, Ron.
Okay. Are there any other questions for this individual? Seeing none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. County Council, are there any other further discussions or questions you have? Oh, I need somebody to introduce it.
Uh, just, just real quick, I, I think, you know, both the, the company and the administration, you know, shouldn't take it all personal at all, you know, that the, the debate we did on this and, and going over it. You know, I think we did have valid concerns, I think, from the audience. One consideration, hopefully it's not, you know, for another 10 years, so we need to do this again. My, my, my one consideration might be that if we really are going to the separation of the election board and the administration and council, that a lot of that vetting and lifting should be done through the election board themselves, you know, obviously giving what aid we can. But that's just, you know, my take on that.
Yeah, I mean, I've done a lot of homework and research. I take everything you folks have brought in. I've talked to others. I went back over your past comments and statements. I did some research going online regarding voter problems, especially regarding any machines or equipment. And Bloomberg and The New Yorker has had some excellent reports over the last past year or two. The biggest problems that seem to come up were, was, I mentioned earlier, with old machines. And, and the fact that, let's be honest, some areas of the country don't want to spend any money on updating their, their voting systems. And that some of the old machines, as any machine is, is open to problems. I couldn't find anything, anything, that said that there was a flipped vote that, that was confirmed. I, I, I looked for it, because, I mean, I was, wanted to find out what I could find. Now, they did say, one, one expert for Pittsburgh said that voting machines that may flip votes don't need to be hacked by a foreign actor. They, they could, they could be done individually, but the amount of work would be extremely involved. But the one thing that I kept coming back to, and, and I've expressed it, and also they found that the fraud, well, fraud rates as well as error rates was less than 1%. I, I really appreciate everybody coming in here and giving their thoughts. I mean, this is, this is a basic function of what we do. Frankly, I don't, I'm a little concerned that we're dealing with it. I've been, made that clear to some people. This was something that was handled by the Election Commission. And in a recent case for a Commonwealth court, where Allegheny County was, they weren't gonna follow through with what their Election Commission wanted. And the court ruled in favor of the Election Commission citing Pennsylvania Constitution, Article 7, Section 6, and the State Election Code, Section 302, saying that it's like a board of elections, when it's a Home Rule Charter. You gotta, you, you know, if they say this is what we want, you could say, under our Home Rule Charter, it says we have the right to, to vote no. I would say then that the Election Commission has the right to, to take us to court. Where the mess that would be. So, anyway, I, I, people have said, well, could you give it more time? I was looking at machines back in August of 2018, and I was going through a whole bunch of machines. I, I don't know how much more time, what we're gonna resolve. There's obviously differences here, there's obviously concerns. I would just say to people, be on guard for everything and anything. I just, it really concerns me, though, that the, the act of voting is... The one thing the President has done, our current President, that's bothered me more than anything, is this constant insistence that there's a massive fraud and deep state fraud. And our basic constitution, everything's at risk, the vote, millions of people who shouldn't vote have voted. And then when he won, he said millions of people voted against him, he would have had a higher total. And if he loses in 2020, and I mean, yes, he's a showman, I mean, anybody that's, I bought, I read the book years ago. I mean, I, I don't know President Trump's about, he, he's, he is what he is. But, but the thing is, I'm just concerned that these discussions are basically striking a fear in people that somehow the system doesn't work. And to me, that, that's the biggest concern. I mean, I've listened closely. Uh, anybody, Harry Truman said that an expert is somebody who's afraid to learn anything new, because then they wouldn't be an expert anymore. Now, he wasn't necessarily the poet laureate of the nation, but he got his points across. And I, I don't know, I mean, in my role as a councilman, I would have preferred that this not become an issue. I didn't see why I did, because whether I agree or disagree, the Election Commission voted. They voted three to two. Why, did the administration push a certain machine? I don't know. But if they did, and the Election Commission felt that they did, they should have said, stop the process in its tracks. And said, we're in charge, not you. I don't know. All I know is it's in front of me tonight, and I know what the law is. And I wanna, excuse me, and I wanna move, we're gonna move forward, obviously with a vote. So, I just wanted you to know where I'm standing on this, where I'm coming from. I don't think there's a right or wrong answer here. I think people, like, somebody said, well, we need more time. Let's be honest, if, if I vote one way, some people are gonna say I voted wrong. If I vote the other way, some people are gonna say I voted wrong. So, I mean, we have to use our best judgment on this, but as far as, as I see it, our decision was made for us. I mean, unless we saw some overriding major problem to reverse the Election Commission. The whole point of the Election Commission is to take, keep it out of elected officials' hands. I, I mean, to me, the biggest threat is if elected people start telling the Election Commission, you're wrong, we're right, and we're gonna change what you voted on. So, that, that's my take on it. I haven't said anything up till now, I wanted you to know. But I did, I wanted to have everybody's voice heard, and I hope you feel you were. That's it for me, I'm done. So, anybody else have anything they want to say or do? Mr. Lot?
Yeah, um, you know, first I want to thank everybody. It is one of the most important issues we have to deal with. We all want fair elections. That being said, I think at this level, it shouldn't be a partisan issue. I think John, Mr. Kuzik, Mr. Deetz wants a fair election as much as I do on, on a local level. So, I, I don't understand, and, and I saw some emails, and I don't understand how this becomes a partisan issue. But maybe I'm just naive to, to politics. I, I don't understand that. I also want to echo what Mr. Deetz and Mr. Heckman said, as far as, I've been told, you know, override, override the election committee, vote no on this. But the same people that are saying that to me are also saying the administration had an overreach on this. And I don't see how you can make both of them in the same breath. You can't, if you, my understanding of the Home Rule Charter is, the election commission, committee selects the machine, the voting machine. We approve paying for it and approve the contract. So, for us not to approve what the election committee said, I think not only are we, not only were you influencing them, we're stepping right on the election committee. So, for me to step on that election committee and not take their vote and not value their vote, I would have had to hear some serious facts. I heard a lot of opinions, and good, and, you know, they're valuable, I appreciate the opinions. I heard a lot of opinions. I heard some facts that we were able to prove incorrect. I heard some facts that were real. But part of me thinks, why weren't these same groups of people at the election committee where this decision was being made? Thank you.
Hey, hey, no, 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 we're not having the discussion. You're out of order.
And I, and I will, should not respond to that, but...
Public comments over.
Apparently, 40 people, election judges, attended this. So, if, if you're good, gonna be, follow politics, and if you're gonna be involved in politics, you must have been out of the country for a couple of months not to realize this was going on. So, I don't buy that argument either. People knew about this, it was well-publicized. To say, I didn't know about this, I'm sorry, but why not? Why not? So, I will be supporting this machine, this voting machine, because I have not heard any facts. Plus, I do not believe that we should, the major reason is, I do not believe we have a right as council to select the machine. It's clear in the Home Rule Charter, it is the election committee. It is up to me to, to purchase that and approve the contract. I have not heard any facts that really say, boy, this is one bad machine, we should not do that. I respect the election committee, and I thank them for their service. I respect all the election judges that spent their, their day looking at these things up in Lehigh. There are a lot of, a lot of work was put into this. So, for, I appreciate that, and I will be supporting it.
Is there anyone else on council? Mr. Kuzik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lot, I appreciate your passion. I, I would echo many of the things that you said. I, too, want to thank all of our election workers who took the time tonight to come out and the work you do every election, sitting there for those long hours, and then coming to the courthouse and standing in line for, for the huge sum that we pay you. You know, I, I can't say enough about the work that you do. And I, I agree, Mr. Lot, I think it's incumbent upon us to respect the decision that, that they came to. I, I also want to circle back to the, the issue, the, the reason why we're here. What's been presented before us is, is an underfunded mandate. And I would encourage everyone to contact their state senator, state representative, and ask them to fully fund this mandate. Because there is no guarantee that we will get any additional funding beyond this budget year, so please do that. My concern, when this was brought to us, was the lack of a track record. I, I did make the motion to table, and I did want to see what happened in Delaware. And from, from what I heard from the administration, from news reports, from people that I know who live down there, this, this went okay. Can something go wrong? Something can always go wrong, but from what I've heard, this was successful. We did hear some red herrings about undervotes. There's undervotes in, in every election. And, and, you know, as I told you, I, I have undervotes every time I give a multiple-choice test, so that's, that's no surprise. And lastly, for me, this is the third time I have been involved with the purchase of election equipment. I do not want to do this again. So, I would urge council to respect the decision that the Election Commission came to and vote to approve the XL machine. Thank you.
Is there anyone else on council? Ms. Zirinsky?
Yeah. I just want to say that I think that we all really did our due diligence on trying to figure out these machines. We asked really tough questions, we all did a lot of research. There was a lot of other research that we did behind the scenes and talking to people. One thing that bothered me was part of the process where the vote came before the Election Commission. I'm not quite sure it was publicized that at that meeting, there would be a vote taken. I've heard from press that they knew that there was a meeting, they did not know that a vote would be taken. I knew that there was a meeting, I did not have, know a vote was gonna be taken that night. And I would, I would have liked that verified. I'm not quite sure how that can be verified now. But it was part of the process. I feel like we have all asked really important questions and knocked down all the dominos, like I like to say, and overcome the objections. I'm going to, I'm going to honor the Election Commission's vote. But it does bother me, too, that this is a mandated, that this is a mandate from Governor Wolf that we have to partially fund at all. And we, there's no telling how much money, I mean, we, we know how much money, but that money is going to be rolled out incrementally, and we have to front the majority of this cost. And I would echo Mr. Kuzik's words, that we should contact our representatives and senators and tell them that this should be fully funded, that this should not be on our backs. And I'm gonna trust this machine, and I'm not gonna be afraid of technology.
Trust but verify.
Trust but verify, and that's what it is, because you can verify this, and that's really what sold me. Because the paper ballot, I understand, there are things that can go wrong with a paper ballot, too. This machine does seem more sound to me at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Zirinsky. Is there anyone else on council who would like to have any statement, any comments, anything you would like to say? Seeing none? Yes, who is this? Lori Vargo Hefner on the phone.
Hefner, I'd like to call the question. I've, I've been listening all night to everyone.
That's what we're doing.
For two weeks ago, to everyone. Could we please call the question?
Uh, that's what about we were ready to do. You have no other thing to add?
I, what else could I possibly say without being repetition?
Oh, I don't know, I think you could think of something. All right, Mazambo, let's call for the vote. Call.
Anyone bring it up?
It's off the table.
It's already introduced.
So, we did that.
So, what's that? I'm sorry. Call the vote.
Mr. Warner?
No.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner? Lori?
Ms. Hefner?
All right, I'll come back to you. Ms. Zirinsky?
Did you hear me?
Yeah, what'd you say?
Your vote.
I said, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
You only get one, thank you.
Ms. Zirinsky?
I'm gonna vote yes.
Mr. Kuzik?
Yes.
Mr. Deetz?
Yes.
Mrs. For...
I want to thank everyone who's been involved in this process, I sincerely mean that. Whether you agree or disagree, that's what makes it all work. Thank you. Okay, moving on.
Oh, we're not even done. We're not done yet.
Oh, no, we have more.
Oh, my God, we're done.
Thank you, thank you to all. All right, now, what we're going to do is, we're going to go to what I had pushed to, and that's a public hearing on the ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the Northampton County Council Authorizing the County of Northampton, Eastern Pennsylvania, to Lease Approximately 2,990 Square Feet of Office Space Identified as 301 Broadway, Bethlehem, Pennsylvania, from Sycamore Hill Farm Development LP. And I believe this is the, the ordinance that has confused Mr. Kusick in terms of what's going on. So the, this was introduced by Ms. Vargo Hefner and Ms. Zirinsky at the May 2 meeting. Are there any questions, or from the, well, are there any questions from the public on this? It's an ordinance. Anybody from the public want to talk about this? Seeing none? Discussion amongst council. Seeing none? Call for the vote.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Is there any other, is there any other old business to discuss? Seeing none? We'll go to new business. Consideration of Personnel Request Resolutions, A, Department of Human Services, Gracel, B, Department of Human Resources, A, Department of Human Services, Gracel. Mr. McGee, this is your ballgame.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that three full-time vacant per diem positions of nursing supervisors, pay grade CS 29A, salary $36,192, shall be eliminated, and one part-time position of clerical technician, three, pay grade of CS 15 1A, salary of $16,562, shall be created. In the Department of Human Services, Gracel Nursing Home Division, effective May 16, 2019. And I'd like to add that we're eliminating three full-time vacant positions and adding one part-time position of clerical.
Mr. McGee, is that full-time equivalent positions? I believe we're getting rid of, where is it?
They're per diem.
They're per diem?
Yes, per diem. Yes, per diem positions, yes. So moved.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? This was brought up at the committee meeting. Seeing none? Call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Mr. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
And Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Did that cover all of your things?
I have another one.
Go ahead. You keep doing what you got to do.
It is hereby resolved by Northampton County Council that one full-time position of recruitment specialist, pay grade CS 17, salary of $36,320, shall be eliminated, and one full-time position of employee recruiting and onboarding administrator, pay grade CS 25, salary $52,493, shall be created in the Department of Human Service, Human Resources, effective May 16, 2019. We, so moved.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Real quick, like I said yesterday, I believe that a certain portion of this should be charged to the Gracel budget, and I urge the administration to review that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, call for the vote.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Passed by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have consideration of acceptance of an anonymous donation of a canine and training to the Sheriff's Department Resolution. I'd like someone to introduce this, I would really like Ms. Zirinsky to introduce this.
I will introduce this because of my love of animals.
She took a special interest in this.
Yeah.
Boomer.
Boomer!
I feel bad about that name.
The dog's not going to know.
That poor dog is going to be stigmatized, he's going to be like, ah!
All right.
Okay, anyway, now, therefore be resolved by the Northampton County Council that it does hereby accept the donation of a canine and its required certification training on behalf of the Northampton County Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on this? It sounded great, I mean, the sheriff was here, answered all her questions, and...
It was awesome. I'm excited about it.
Beautiful lab.
Fantastic.
Progressive canines.
And, and just, I know, Ms. Zirinsky, you were concerned, being a lab, but I heard it's an assertive lab.
An assertive lab.
Okay.
It has the demeanor of a shepherd, is that what you're trying to say?
Yes, that's right, thinks it's a shepherd. All right, call for the vote.
Ms. Zirinsky?
Yes.
Mr. Kusick?
Yes.
Mr. Dietz?
Yes.
Mrs. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Heckman?
Yes.
Mr. Lot?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Ms. Vargo Hefner?
Yes.
Mr. Warner?
Yes.
Adopted by a vote of nine to zero.
Thank you. Consider number three, consideration of an Article 13 Contract Resolution, Wrench Tech, Jeff's Automotive, Alex Tire Center, Inc., and Cox 33 Ford. Mr. Lot, how about you take a run at this?
Oh, great, now I got to find it.
That's very funny.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Keep you on your toes.
I know, I just was giving it a break. Now, therefore it be resolute that the Northampton County Council does hereby concur with the